Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Gordon Miller. I live at 49 Trigger Drive. I'm not saying I'm diametrically opposed to any of this. Actually, the verdict's out because I probably haven't done enough reading. But taking a look at these lists of services, without my glasses, by the way. There's a brainwave move for me. A whole lot of services are listed here. I think what we require is a detailed cost breakdown with regards to each of these services. Because, you know, I mean, Europe is, I could get into some geopolitical things here, but austerity measures are sometimes very necessary. And when we look at each of these areas, you say there's a cost incurred for each of these, but we don't understand why. At least, I don't understand why. And as I said, I would like a detailed cost breakdown when it comes to each of these so that I can understand why you need to increase my taxes. You know, we've gone down from a double income to a single income family. I have a child living with complex medical needs, but that's, you know, my business and I have to try and generate income through a second job. But that being said, I want bang for my buck. I want to know what I'm spending my money on. When I go out and buy a vacuum, I'm going to spend a lot of money buying a vacuum and I'm going to make sure I research that vacuum ahead of time. I want to know, if that makes any sense, what I just said, but I want to know why I'm spending this money. Please tell me. And perhaps we can have some input. You know, the smallest cuts across the board for things that are really non-essential can save your bundle and save the rest of us a bundle, right? So my comments are just going to be brief. Break it down for us by category. Let us have some input. And just another question, I guess. Have you sought outside consultation to maybe tackle this problem? You know, when you want to think outside of a box, you have to talk to others who've been in the same boat, right? I don't envy your position, but let's look at this intelligently. Let's break it down. Let's see what we can do.
Just so you're aware, we are in, I think it's year six of a 20-year agreement that was put together between the province and the federal government for policing services. We pay 2.5, we will be paying 2.5 million dollars for policing services for the Town of the Paw. I'm a little afraid to break that down. I just, I'm afraid of some of the things that I'm going to learn. It's just, we all know federal governments are famous for spending, you know, $8,000 on a toilet seat. So, you know, I just, I fear where we're going. We had air conditioning issues in their building. I think they were here for almost two years.
I'm not specifically referring to just the policing. I mean, we can save money across the board by looking at all the departments within the Town of the Paw and seeing how we can streamline, how we can cut off any unnecessary fat and save some dough. But let me just get to policing then for a second. I see a lot of reactive policing in this town, and that's necessary. You know, you're always stomping out fires all over the place. But I don't see any proactive community-based policing plans. Nothing has been announced. I've seen nothing. You know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right? And so, as I said, if we're going to tackle this, we're going to keep on putting on fires and they're going to get larger and larger and they're going to cost more and more. So I think part of this should be the development of a proactive preventative policing plan. I mean, we'll get some bang for our buck, right? That's all I have to say. I'd like to see, you know, have some transparency, just to recap. See where we could save money. Open it up to the public. Open it up for suggestions. I'm sure you'll get, you know, a number of responses. And let's look at being a little more proactive because I would be happy to spend that money if I knew A, B, and C was happening and I could walk across the town safely in the middle of the night. Thanks, that's all.
So, just if I could, so a lot of those costs, aside from policing ironically, are available in a breakdown in our financial plan that's presented each and every year. Unfortunately, we never have this many people in the room when we present the financial plan. It would be amazing if we did, but that financial plan is also available online and of course you can request a copy from the Town of the Paw. So it would tell you what, again, the majority of your tax dollars go towards. And I think it would be amazing to have a conversation with citizens because we have a lot of services that we provide in this community that aren't provided in other communities of like size, so therefore our tax bill is higher. So I think it would be awesome to have a conversation to say, okay, so what would you like to not see so that we can decrease some of the taxes? And I think another thing I want to mention is that by inducing this special service levy, we wouldn't be increasing our municipal budget. The municipal budget would stay the same. We're not generating any more revenue by inducing this special service levy. And like many people have said before, right, it's that everybody would pay $900, which doesn't cover the full cost of policing, so the rest of that would be made up by assessment. So essentially, those living in higher-assessed houses would still be paying more for policing than somebody living in a lower-assessed house. But that gap in between where you could have somebody, if you broke down their tax bill, paying $25 for policing, let's say, and somebody else paying, so on a, 25% of our budget, right, goes to policing. So if you take a $6,000 tax bill and you take 25% of that, that's $1,500, right? So literally, you have somebody who could be paying $15 for policing and you have somebody who could be paying $1,500 for policing. So is that a fair, is that a fair taxation system either? Because literally, both of those people can pick up the phone and call 911 and have access to police and maybe some call more than others, but that service and that access to service is the same for both people. So therefore lies part of our conundrum because what we have isn't exactly fair, but I don't believe what we're proposing is fair either. And I agree with Mr. Young. I don't think that, you know, my cousin, Mr. Morris, who owns a fourplex should pay the same as yourself, who owns a single, a single-family home. I don't, I don't believe that that is necessarily fair, which is why I won't be voting in favor of the bylaw in its current position. But I just, there was a lot of people who kind of made similar comments, so I wanted to point some of those things out.
Well, I'm glad I, my sitting here gave you the opportunity to bet that, and that's fine, and I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate you saying that, but I think the reason I'm sitting here is because I think we need to do things more efficiently, more effectively. I think we need to streamline. I used to work for the town in multiple departments back in the day, and I'll just leave it at that. Now, things change. I used to work for the town, and I know, and I'm not denigrating town employees by any stretch of the imagination, but I know there are areas where we can save money. And I'm not going to get into it right now, right here. What I'm saying is with absolute transparency of the budgets, I'm not talking summary budgets here. I'm talking about departmental plans. I'm talking about exact cost breakdowns. And transparency, transparency that speaks of, you know, okay, let me back this up. Transparent to a point where we are able to provide effective feedback versus that which is provided in one of your semi-summit summary documents that you were referring to. We need to engage in some level of austerity, so we have to, you know, look at austerity measures to offset these costs that maintain service delivery which is sufficient. And, you know, I'm not well-versed enough in this to continue at this juncture. However, I just think there are many ways to skin a cat. We have to think outside the box and every other cliche I can come up with, sitting right here, right now. But people, knowledge is power. Knowledge is change, and I think we have to operate from that point of view. Let's just hold our horses a little bit, just a little bit. Let's look at ways we can save money. Let's look at ways we can do this just a little better.
I can assure you, we are, we are doing that. Efficiency has been our front and center work for three and a half years now. So I know that there's, you can always find more, but what we're talking about tonight is a cost that is completely uncontrollable by myself or you. We get a bill from the RCMP and they have net 30 days.
And I understand that, but what I'm getting at is we can defray those costs in other ways. As I said, I'm not going to continue at this point because my knowledge is not sufficient.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate everything you have to say.
But I will talk about, and I will reiterate the one point before I get out of this chair, is the fact we have to have some sort of proactive preventative policing plan, and that's got to be part of this inordinate cost. Thank you.
Okay? Okay? One more opportunity?
My name is Eric Kellner, owner at 378 St. Antoine, income property next door, 376, the other side of my duplex. Two kind of points I have. My first question is my understanding of a special levy has always been to offset projects, like offsetting the wellness center, arena improvements, that type of thing. Policing doesn't sound like a special project. It sounds like, you know, but it, you know, it sounds like, you know, it's water. You know, you need it when you need it. You turn the tap, you call them, you got to have them there. So I was wondering if that really met the definition and somewhere in there, it probably does.
So there's a difference between, between the two though. Between a special levy and a deventure, there's a difference. Like, for example, when the wellness center was built, certainly this community could not afford to pay for that in one year, and so you take a loan and you pay it out over a number of years.
Right.
A special levy is something that's paid every year.
Yeah.
We have policing costs every year.
Yeah.
So that's the difference between the two.
Yeah. And one thing I've noticed in a lot of the comments, and it's not, I'll use the word pitting high value against lower value property owners, like, you know, I can't afford it because, you know, I have a lower property value. Mine's going to go up 66 to 75% next year. Somebody on Geimer I was talking to on the weekend, he's hoping his goes down because he's up in the 7,000 range or whatever. I see the biggest inequity here is between the single dwelling and the large income property owners. Somebody who's got 48 suites is going to pay $900. I'm going to pay $900 for mine, $900 for mine one, just to be clear about that though.
So somebody in that example with a 48-suite unit will pay 900 plus the mill rate portion against their assessment.
So am I.
So, so in your case.
I'm going to pay $900 plus a mill rate assessment.
You're going to play, yeah, exactly. But so his assessed value on a 48-unit complex might be $2 million, right? So the, call it a three-mill rate portion will be applied against his assessed value of 2.5 million, which might drag his special service levy component up to $11,000. Or I'm just picking numbers out of the air. It's definitely not $900. Yours might actually.
But my special levy.
Yours special levy might actually be going to be $990. 900 plus that portion that goes against your assessment. So there's, there's two elements at play there. It's not, it's not the case at all that somebody with a complex of 48 units is going to pay $900 or $990. They're going to pay $900 plus a mill rate that is multiplied against their assessed value of the property. So I'm not suggesting that it's somehow, whatever. I just want to make sure we're clear about that. They're not the same. Duplex, yeah, it doesn't rate as large, not as large a change, but we're clear about that. That is the situation.
But this major discussion is about the levy?
Yes.
Not, not the mill rate increase for it, but the levy itself?
No, but the levy itself includes a portion. It's $900. That's part of the special service levy plus the component that is, sorry. The special service levy is $900, but the component of policing costs is then raised through mill rate assessment. I may make sure I'm, I'm getting this right, right?
Basically, you get the $900 plus assessed value.
I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. $900 per parcel does not raise 2.5 million dollars, and it won't raise $3 million for next year. We picked $900 and said that's kind of a flat fee that everybody will pay, and then the component of protective services of policing costs that remains as a gap, so, you know, our cost turns out to be $3 million next year. If the $900 per parcel raises $2 million only, then the other 1 million is based on assessment still. But it's only based on, on the portion of the mill rate that applies to raise the funds just for policing costs. So a 48-unit complex will be assessed at, call it $3 million, just for square numbers. They will pay $900 plus, if it's a three-mill rate that gets applied to make up the gap, whatever that works out, three mills times the 2.5, 3 million portion assessment component. Sorry, lots of math. But it works out, I mean, we did the numbers on, I remember seeing the numbers on a, I think a 24-unit complex. Presently, they pay, and you can't quote me on these numbers, I'm going to say $26,000. And then when the special service levy component was applied, it worked out to like 21. So a definite reduction there, and we get that people are concerned about per parcel versus domestic unit, but it's not like the 24-unit complex is paying $900 and that's it. There is a component there that, that brings about a certain level of fairness. Now, I get the discussion around whether or not that's truly the right system or whether we've got those factors quite right. I want to make sure that we're clear that, for everybody that understands that. It doesn't mean that a duplex pays only, or pays 900 and that's it because it's a single parcel, or if it's two parcels, it's 18, or a fourplex on one parcel pays only 900. They do, but they're assessed higher because they are four units instead of one, right? So the assessment branch considers those things, their assessed value is more. So I just want to be clear about that. Sorry to rail on.
The general gist is the higher the value, the better your reduction is going to be.
Yes.
And for a single residence landlord like myself, I'm going to have to apply to the rental board so that I can increase it or eat that slightly over $100 a month based on estimates.
Yeah.
That's, I've read in the paper and in the bylaw type things. That potential $5,000 that an apartment is just gravy into the pocket, probably gone out of town to remote landowners, you know, in some of, some of the situations. Or may stay in town, but, you know, those renters aren't going to see $30 off in the rent because the value went down or the, that cost went down. So people who are making, you know, income properties will get more money. People are just trying to pay for that other side of the building and have somebody you can control live there are going to see considerable increase.
Yeah. Generally speaking, about complexes and the per parcel, not fair.
Yeah. But that's, that is, I mean, that's the first time it's been described that way in anywhere written down that I've seen. You know, maybe I missed an article here, but, you know, tonight, for instance, it's been kind of going, you know, everybody's being that flat plus, plus something.
So glad you raised your concern and we could clarify that then.
Yeah. I still oppose it.
Totally agree. I get where you're coming from.
Is there, is there better ways? Possibly. But, you know, just tagging with a flat fee and then managing around it when that flat fee is significant. You know, the flat fee alone is 50% for me, you know, twice, you know, so, and for my renter, you know, they're, they're low income. If they can't afford to rent for me, where do they go next? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council members. My name is Gunter Beal. I'm 536 Campbell Drive, and I'd like to express my concern about the extra police fees that were supposed to be imposed on us. That's a concern of mine. And personally, for me, I'd like to protest no because what I see is virtually none police services happening. And the reason being is about six, seven years ago, there were suspicious activities happening in my corner of Campbell and Hayes. I called the police twice on different occasions, it was the same thing that's going on, and they took my call, but no one showed up, right? And then the last time was about five years ago, there was a red SUV parked on the side, side of my house, and the couple that was in there, they were drinking, okay? So I says, come on, I've got kids here, just move along. They only went as far as the gravel where the pavement ends on Hayes, and they stopped there. Of course, I called RCMP again, and again, waited 45 minutes, never bothered showing up. So there is my problem right there. Why should I pay extra money when they don't bother showing up when I call? I figured as a taxpayer, I should have some sort of liberties in having that service. When I call for any activity that's, you know, very highly suspicious that's going on, I expect them to be there like in 15 minutes. Whether they took my call seriously or not, that's besides the point. I expect them to be there when, when, as a citizen of, you know, taxpayer of this town, when I call, okay? So that's the thing. I protest the fees for the extra police services because they didn't show me any initiative, any concern of, of coming down and, and checking out the call. So that's all I got to say. And by the way, that bill, send it back to whoever it is, a staff sergeant, and tell him to sharpen his pencil and try again.
You know, I, I hear you, boy. Phone the police and they don't come. I, if I've said it once, I've said it a thousand times since I took on this job, call the police. And they may not come, but call the police because every time you call the police, it becomes a file. And I'm going to throw a number out at you that's going to stun you, but their three-quarter report came in last week and they've had 6,900 files in the Paw. So call the police. They may not come, but call the police. That file just gets bigger and bigger and bigger, and that's, that numbers, numbers speak, so.
I have a suggestion then. If that's the case, then send them a bill about the amount of files I've heard from the call.
Got you. Thank you. Okay? Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. Herb Jakes, 1717 Gordon Avenue. I'd like to just make some general comments. As many of you know our family, we own and operate the Anderson Inn, formerly the Super Eight in the Paw. Our annual property taxes right now hit the $160,000 a year mark. We have a couple of other buildings in town that we own. We contribute over $200,000 per year in direct property taxes to the community. We also remit another $100,000 a year in accommodation fees. Next to salaries, the Town of the Paw is our single biggest expense. If this proposal was to go forward, we would see our property taxes drop between $20,000 and $25,000 a year. In its current format, we don't agree with that. We would love to see our property taxes decreased by the $25,000 a year. Who wouldn't? But we don't want it at the expense of somebody living on Big Knoll or Head or La Rose or wherever that might be. That's just not what we're about. There was some comments made about some of the families in town, be it Morris's, Premichuk, maybe the Hokus's or us. This community is extremely lucky that these longtime families believe in this town and this community and have invested significant amounts of their life efforts and capital in this community. There is no growth in the Paw. There is none. I completely empathize with the people in this room and the things that they are saying. The bad news is that the tax increase you're fearing is just around the corner. As we all know, development is stymied. The situation at the lagoon has gotten to the state that we can't have development until we fix the lagoon of any significant size. We've lost the tax revenue from the Gateway Hotel and probably soon the Hawaiian Inn. I don't know how much that would be a year, $50,000, whatever it might be. Unfortunately, the people in this room are going to have to pick up a shortfall because the money has to come from somewhere. This, there is, I wear a number of hats. I looked at a house on Lamb Crescent just the other day that had sold. It sold for $160,000. It would have sold for $200,000 all day long just a couple of years ago. That's a 20% drop in the value of their property, but lo and behold, their property taxes are still 4,400 bucks a year. We have to find a way to address the tax problem in our community. It's going to require some creative thinking and some creative solutions, but if, that has to be a priority for this council and future councils because if we don't deal with the property taxes, it's going to get worse. There will be no development and people won't be able to afford to stay in their homes. It's just that simple. You know, you hate being the dark knight, so to speak, with all this doom and gloom, but that is the reality of the situation we're in right now. When, at the hotel, we're fortunate, we have a number of business people who come through and, you know, you never know who you're talking to or what company they represent. But they always ask, how are things in the Paw? So when you start explaining to them the situation in the Paw, you can understand why there's no growth because this is a tough town. Comparatively speaking to Flynnflon and Thompson, we're in much, much better shape. Thompson's in a world of hurt right now and Flynnflon's knocking on the door. We're fortunate in that CKPI is stable. They're investing heavily in the mill at this point in time. The workforce seems to be stable, so it's not all, it's not all terrible, but we have got to deal with the property taxes in this community. And either we increase our revenues or we cut our costs. That's all there is. That's all I got.
Well, I'm hoping we increase our revenues and broaden the tax base.
Thank you.
All right. One more opportunity. Okay.
RM in 727 Taylor Avenue. I didn't write an objection before this meeting because this isn't the end of this, right? I mean, you can still write letters of objection after?
I'm sorry?
Letters of objection. You can write them after this meeting, like this isn't the be-all, end-all. It seems to be in the municipal act, and we went through this with the, with the special service public hearing for the RM last month, but if before the third reading, the municipal board receives 25 letters of objection or more, they'll, they'll have to come up here and hold a public hearing.
We have hundreds.
Yeah, regardless, regardless of how you're going on record right now, we're, we're accepting that as.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. And I didn't write a letter because there wasn't too many specifics, but this is, yeah, okay. All right. Now, my main objection to this proposed levy is the value of the houses, I guess through lack of assessments, I don't think they're where they should be. You know, it'd feel better about, you know, there's, if there's a large disparity between the cheapest house and the, and the most expensive house, then maybe a reassessment is in order. There was an article written in the Pasqua Times last week or two weeks ago about the levy. They made a mention of Counselor Cross living in a $70,000 home, Counselor Gibb living in a $250,000 home. So if Counselor Cross is living in a $70,000 home, obviously anybody can live in a $70,000 home. It might not be exactly what they want, but they can do it. So why does somebody live in a $250,000 home? It's a luxury and it, you know, the owner might not fit the image of like, you know, a Roman emperor or anything, but it is a luxury. So with this proposed levy, Counselor Cross is going to see an increase in his taxes she pays, Counselor Gibb will see a decrease. Counselor Cross will be paying more for a necessity so that Counselor Gibb can save money on a luxury. And that's why I don't, that's why I object. So I, I think there's some work to be done, and I'm sure it's not easy, but in cutting expenses. I mean, if you lower property taxes, I'll pay less tax, and somebody owns a $250,000 home will pay way less tax because it's based off a mill rate, so that's the way to go.
Good, thank you. Oh, I thought you were going to bolt right out the door. Gee, I was going to exit. All right, one more time. I really think everything's been said. Oh, step up, Lucille.
Lucille Iles, 211 Patrick. Pretty near everything's been said. My main objection is special levies because usually those go on and on and on, and I mean, we're going to end up having our taxes go up anyway, and the special part just means that we're going to get taxed anyway. I'm just wondering where, where the model came from for this and if it was already fleshed out sort of thing.
If I understand you correctly, we, as a council, looked at costs that are uncontrollable costs. Like, we don't, we can't say, you know what, we're going to, we're going to get rid of two dump trucks and a pickup truck and do less here, we can save money there. So this is a special levy.
No, 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 I meant, I meant how you were doing a model for how you were going to do the taxing, like this, this new tax model to, for your, this new tax.
So this is something that isn't new. It's something that's new to the Paw, but actually.
That's what I mean.
The RM actually has, Rod could probably answer. I know they for sure have won several special service levies. They have five, so the RM has five special service levies, and that's how they do taxation is based on assessment and special service levies. And there are several other communities within the province that also use special service levies, Flynnflon being the closest one. People like to compare us to Flynnflon. We're not really that comparable, unfortunately, but, yeah. So Flynnflon probably would be the closest community to us besides the RM that has special service levies. Flynnflon does have a special service levy for policing costs.
Well, okay, the policing costs, like, I mean, if it would have been, like, I'm seeing the paperwork and it was just like, initially I was hearing, okay, it was for policing costs, and then all of a sudden I'm seeing, okay, highways, snow removal plants and grass and da-da-da-da-da.
Those are just, those are just different ways you can apply special service levies.
Yeah, and it was just like.
But that's not what we're.
do the taxing, like this, this new tax model to, for, for your, this new tax.
So this is something that isn't new, it's something that's new to the Paw, but actually the RM, the RM actually has, Rod could probably answer, I know they for sure have won several special service levies, they have five, so the RM has five special service levies, and that's how they do taxation, is based on assessment and special service levies, and there are several other communities within the province that also use special service levies, Flynn-Flon being the closest one. People like to compare us to Flynn-Flon, we're not really that comparable, unfortunately, but, yeah, so Flynn-Flon probably would be the closest community to us besides the RM that has special service levies. Flynn-Flon does have a special service levy for policing costs.
Well, okay, the policing costs, like, I mean, if it would've been, like, I'm seeing the paperwork and it was just like, initially I was hearing, okay, it was for policing costs, and then all of a sudden I'm seeing, okay, highways, snow removal plants and grass and da-da-da-da-da-da.
Those are just, those are just different ways you can apply special service levies.
Yeah, and it was just like.
But that's not what we're applying them for, we're applying it specifically for policing.
It was just going, okay, it sounded like Trudeau saying, oh, we're putting a carbon tax and we're gonna use it for whatever we want it for, and I'm just like, okay, no, I don't want that. And I'm just like, okay, we obviously need a policing tax, and, but, wouldn't it have gone with just going with a regular increase with the regular taxing rate? Wouldn't it have been easier that way? Or no?
That's the system that already exists, let's just capture the general budget, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the system that already exists, and so.
Instead of having a special rate and then shocking everybody with this, with this special rate being, and then everybody's here wondering, okay, what's going on? Because some people are, some people are being taxed differently, and then it was just.
Everybody's being taxed the same.
So everybody would be taxed the same, but all that would happen is we would pull the cost of policing out of the, out of the general budget and apply that to everybody. We would take nine hundred dollars, which doesn't cover the total cost of policing. If we wanted to make everybody pay per parcel equally, it would be about eleven hundred dollars that everybody would pay per year, per parcel, whether you were a business, an apartment, whatever, for policing. So we didn't go with that route because then you would have literally apartment complexes paying the same as single-family dwellings. So we took a number that I honestly, the nine hundred dollars is a number that's variable, it can change, which means we could make that number lower and make the mill rate to take the rest higher to offset that. But nine hundred dollars was the number that we moved forward with and what we proposed. It's great, again, that we're getting all this feedback, but, again, we're not likely going to move forward, I mean, we're not voting right now, so we're likely not moving forward with this bylaw as it's proposed right now. So you won't be seeing the big change to your tax bill this year.
Well, that's good.
Yes.
Oh, well, I missed the other thing that I was gonna suggest, another suggestion.
I'm sorry, could I get you to speak up, it's just a little bit.
Sorry. Another suggestion is like if you're, there was several people that were out in the hallway that would've loved to hear what was being said, but nobody could hear, so even if you had had a karaoke machine, speaker, so that we could've heard outside, because.
You can't hear here, so.
To have better speaker system, because there was a lot of people that would've loved to hear, because I hear.
I hear you. You know what, there's probably seventy-five people in the room here, seventy-five, eighty people in the room here?
And you're warming here, right?
That's about seventy-four more than we usually have, so, you know, you're right, it would've been great if we had a speaker, Sarah.
And you should've known that somebody would've been wanting to talk here. Thanks.
Always welcome, thank you, Lucille. All right, I think, I think we've covered all of the bases. Sure?
My name's Ron Ford, three-thirty-eight Verandre Street, and as everybody else is opposed to, everything's been covered, pretty much, that I was gonna talk in length with. I'm a member of the Financial Committee for the Roman Catholic Church, that's all been covered by two already. Seeing as how this levy is proposed as a policing cost thing, how much do we really have control of what the police are gonna give us for a bill? Because most of us here, I've been a permanent resident of this town, permanent here for forty-two years. I've called the RCMP once in forty-two years, and probably by a raise of hands in here by everybody, I don't imagine everybody else in this room is much more than once, hopefully. So all we gotta do is drive around town, and I think we know where the bulk of our policing costs are, and there's the brunt of our problem. There's the brunt of our problem, and I don't see it diminishing at all. And that's the crux we're in. Like, this isn't the place to be a long-winded debate, whenever that can be done at a council one, I'll gladly attend, but there's the crux we're in. We're paying, or asked to pay more for a service that we're not currently, you know, me, if we were using it per use, what would my tax be once in forty-two years?
That's why I asked you about user fees.
Yeah.
Margaret?
I like Mr. Miller's comment.
I think he's gone.
Gone. But we need preventative and we need proactive. And yes, I call the police many, many times.
Oh, yes.
And there's a lot of times I don't. I just wanna tell the public, like Jim, oh, sorry, Jim, said to call, 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 and I know it's a real, it's a real pain to have to call because there's a different system now. It's a nine-one-one call and you go to Brandon. So you're not calling the girls down the street, which I used to say, hi, it's Margaret, you know, the guys around, can they come down? Now it's you're calling Brandon and you're giving the whole spiel, and I myself don't call enough anymore because by the time they get the call and go to the members, the problem has gone.
Well.
But yes, we do need a proactive and preventive.
I actually called twice, Margaret.
What was that?
Once was for recently, incident on Edwards Avenue.
Okay.
Where I called and it went to one nine-one-one first, then they referred me to another nine-one-one, and the total time, as you can tell now with the fantastic cell phones, it was like eleven minutes before we actually talked to somebody. And then when I did talk to somebody, you know, I said, you know, this guy's getting the tar whooped out of him on the main street, and they proceeded to ask me all my details first, like, we're not gonna send anybody, like, I'm gonna give them a crank call, and then they asked me if there's a weapon involved. I said, no, but I have a weapon, I'll take care of it. Oh, we'll have a car. And to which, there was a car there within, you know, a minute, but in the meantime, I was on the phone for thirteen minutes, or fourteen minutes.
I actually did that with a bucket of water. I said, don't worry, I'll, I'll use my bucket of water. They were coming up the back alley in a hurry.
If you go, if you tell them you have a weapon, they respond quite quickly.
No, I just said a bucket of water. After they gave away personally for me.
Okay. I don't know if we wanna do a runaround with council, I, I, I can tell you right now, I will be voting against this bylaw in its current form, although I'm looking for the formula where it's going to work on costs that are uncontrollable to our community. Once that we, we can't do anything about, those are costs that come in, we need, we need to do something about that. This obviously is not the right formula, so the search continues, and, so I'll be voting against this bylaw. Anybody else?
I, too, will be voting against the bylaw. I think that special service levies, sorry, I, too, will be voting against the bylaw. I think that special service levies can actually be very beneficial and a positive thing when done properly. I don't think that we have the formula quite right. I wanna assure you, we didn't rush into this, this is something that we have been working on for three years, and, you know, we felt time, it was, it was time to move forward with something, you know, again, I love the feedback, I love seeing people here, I wish more people came to all of our council meetings so that you had input and feedback on everything that we do. One thing that I do just wanna reiterate is, you know, we heard about trimming the fat, Jim mentioned that, you know, we have been doing that, so I just wanna reiterate that. Our staff has worked very hard to do things more efficiently, to trim where they could, you know, to, to combine and share where they could with services and equipment and that sort of thing, so I really wanna commemorate them for that. I know it hasn't been easy. This council has kept the same budget for, well, this will be our fourth year, so we'll see what happens, but for three years, so the budget that we passed in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen was the same as twenty fourteen. Actually, twenty seventeen was just slightly less. I know there's been some concern about the forestry incentive grant to CKPI having an impact and maybe being the reason for this special service levy, I wanna reiterate that that's not the case. The grant from CKPI actually comes from the Bipole Reserve Fund, it doesn't come from municipal taxes, so taxpayers do not pay for the grant to the forestry incentive or to CKPI, it's paid through the Bipole Funds. And, yeah, I mean, keep coming, this is going to go to a reading, it's probably going to be defeated, is what I'm pretty sure that I understand from council, but don't stop telling us how you feel and what you think, and if you have suggestions or thoughts of what we can do or how we can make this better, and you think of them later, please pass them on, because we're going to continue to work on this.
Just one more thing, for when the council meetings are and, you know, some of the stuff that happened recently with the hot sales and that, unless you, from what I understand anyway, unless you bought a paper that we, most people were unaware of what was going on, but that was possibly holding, is, is that kind of stuff put on, the web somewhere, like, everybody gets the information.
You have to, it's the law, you have to give certain periods of time to do things, it was within the law, was it, not, maybe not, but.
No, well, no, I'm not saying that, Jim, but, like, if you don't buy a paper, you don't see it.
Yeah.
So our meetings are put onto YouTube and Facebook right after, so there was notices on Facebook, yes, it was in the paper, and, and so you're right, though, we probably could've done a better job of advertising, but, yeah, like, you know, it was on the radio.
Trent covered it extensively.
Yeah, we tried to utilize the media, obviously, but.
It's not on like the Pod Community Events calendar, or did I miss it on there?
Uh, you know what, I'm not sure if it was there or not, I really don't, I really don't know, but, I mean, you know, you try and hit all the bases, right? You do radio, you do, you do, you know, internet, you do newspaper, you're doing your cap.
I just missed the town's own website.
Yeah, that was on our website, too.
All the council, all public hearings, all will have public hearings when necessary, but nothing about this was specific.
So if you go under, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a navigation thing, so don't, if you went under council meetings as opposed to the public hearing, you would've found the agenda for tonight's meetings, and so that's probably something we need to be more diligent about again, is making sure that if there are multiple places on the website for things, that they're linked to all of the places that they should be, or maybe we need to get rid of things so that the website isn't so hard to navigate.
Okay. Anyway, anybody else from council? Frank?
Yeah, in, in quick response to, to Ron's question about communication, unfortunately, our, our financial situation leaves us in a spot where, where we, we would have to increase our taxes to get the software that would actually send out, there's a tool that we just heard about, you know, a few months ago, and it will, it will send out messages from the town to its citizens through their smartphones and cell phones, you could, so that you can send direct notification to you, and we all know that usually when something beeps in your pocket, people are curious to see what it's gonna say, and that would be a great thing, but it's, there again, it's another value that can't be dealt with at this time, but should be in the future. With regard to taxes in general, I'm old school, I say, you want, you want us to reduce your taxes, you need to tell us what, what you wanna give up, because the quickest way to reduce taxes is to change that big number on the bottom line, and that's not an easy task, because of course, when you do one thing, there's a domino effect in everything else that has to be taken into consideration. With regard to the special levy fee, I, I supported bringing this forward, one, because I knew there'd be a reaction, and we needed to hear it, we should've and could've done it sooner, we, we didn't do that, that's something as a council, we need to be more diligent about. Giving people the opportunity to come in and share their opinion and their ideas often takes, takes the same problem, but gives us a different, slightly different perspective, because everyone here, it impacts differently. And going forward, as a council, we have to look at that. I don't know whether we're just gonna throw it out and what impact that has if we have to use it next year or the year after, because, because there's a, there's a thing, if you, if you have a discussion about something and you choose not to accept it, you don't just next month, bring it up again, and next month, bring it up again, you have to set it aside for a reasonable length of time, at least a year, before you can even, even consider it again, which may create issues going forward in terms of the taxation process we would envision, because even though it may not go forward at this time in its current format, I would suspect that because this is a provincial-wide thing that's happening, it's a mindset with governments and, and others that they're moving forward and putting these special levies in there to try and level it out, some would argue that, that just because I choose to build and, and, or own an expensive house, doesn't mean my means are, are that much greater than, than some others. So they say, well, you each, each live within your means, yes, but you have to, you have to now, as was stated tonight, deal with, with the fairness side of it. Trying to explain fairness to somebody that's on the short end of the spectrum and getting hit hard is, is much more difficult than explaining it to someone on the other side. The alternate and secondary factor that comes into play with, with this kind of thing is, the Paw has a reputation of being the highest tax community in the province. We're not gonna get that tax-based building, because people don't wanna, don't wanna build, they'll, they'll wanna rent, but then that means you have to go to the developers and get them to do the building and the upfront money and, and bear that burden of cost and hope the community continues to move forward and grow and improve. So there's a lot of things, you know, it's kinda like, there's a lot of balls in the air that, that are trying to be juggled to make it all work, and it's not a simple, simple task, but it's not impossible. I, I would hope that going forward, more meetings like this happen earlier on in the process, and I, and I really hope that, continue to show up when you, when you're upset with us, and if you have a better idea for us, share it with somebody on council, they'll mention it to us and bring it forward. Thank you.
Chad?
Yeah, kinda the same as, as everybody else. You know, I see the value in the special service levy. I, I don't think that, again, we have it right at this point, but I think it's something that we do need to go forward on in the future, and it's like, it's good to get this feedback so that we, we can start putting the, the different, the different ideas in place and, and come up with the right formula, that's gonna work for everybody, so, well, like I said, I can't support it as it sits right now, I would like to see it go forward in a different form.
Margaret?
I've done a lot of writing tonight. I've listened to all your points, I thank everybody for coming out, and like the other councilors have said, we want to hear your opinions. I will be voting against it, because I don't feel it's right, we just don't have it right yet, and we've all said that, Jim said that at the beginning of the meeting, and again, I thank you, and, yeah, and as I said before, you know, when Ron was, we're talking about the number of police calls, we need to, we need to pretty up our town, so if anybody has any ideas, be proactive, and bring some businesses to our town, don't have to be big businesses, but they can all be small, and those small, and keep our community shopping in town. And.
Yeah, I mean, echo a lot of, a lot of what other councilors have said, I mean, one
thing that I would say, especially having a captive audience at the moment, is that folks, it's not enough, it's not enough for us to simply say things like, we need to think outside the box, we gotta find creative solutions, we don't know what those are. It's not enough, like, I challenge all of you, and all of us are challenged with that every council meeting that we go to, it's not enough for everyone to leave here and feel like, well, we just gotta find some efficiencies, man, I tell you, there are no efficiencies left to be found in this town operation. Our staff have done, I've been, this is my eighth budget coming up, and we have trimmed every ounce of fat that you can find, and, yeah, you might be able to drive by on a street and see two guys standing near a fire hydrant and go, well, that doesn't look very efficient, but I can go into every one of your workplaces and find the same thing, because I just don't know enough about your workplace to know whether or not that's truly efficient or not, or what they're doing standing there. But I promise you that there is not a single ounce of fat in our operation, there is nothing left to squeeze to make things just that much more efficient, to make any significant change to what your tax bill looks like at the end of the day. So it will require, it will require change. This existing system of taxation, if we just continue on with the assessment system and we continue to apply mill rates based on whatever our costs are against whatever revenue is generated, in ten years from now, this will be far worse for everybody in the room than you thought it would've been had we just implemented the special service levy, if the special service levy is set up in a way that it triggers some kind of growth. That's what we need, so, you know, it's not, I challenge every one of you, it's not enough to leave here and say, well, I don't know what it is, but you gotta get outside the box, too bad, you gotta get outside. You got to get outside the box, too, and you got to tell us what you're thinking. We, we do that, we try to do that. I mean, we're here to, we were elected, right? So, that means that I sit here and I represent people that thought that I would be a good councillor for four years, and so they voted for me. And so, every council meeting, I try and do my best to make sure that I'm thinking about the people that voted for me and why they voted for me, and what I said my experiences were and what I thought my strengths were, and the things that I knew that I didn't have strength in. Not, not every one of us has all of the skills required to sit down at a council table and know everything or all things that need to be known to be effective. But we all bring something, and you folks need to communicate with us. And, Ron, I mean, you asked, you know, "How do we know about stuff, like, can the notices be more?" Mr. Miller sat down and said, "We need to know the details." Like, I could count on both of these hands, the number of people that have showed up to our financial plan presentations, every year, like, all four. This would be it.
Was Trent on?
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, and I'm not, you know, it's, it's not to be, I'm not trying to be, uh, I'm trying to be pragmatic. People need to engage. You need to engage us. Going on Facebook and just sending out a comment to somebody that raised a comment elsewhere doesn't bring the information we need here. We need the community to think about what it is it needs to change, or nothing will. We, we need change. So, something like the special service levy, and the reason that, that Jim points out, that the reason that we held this special service levy, or maybe it was you, Crystal, or it was Brian, actually, is because we knew, we could have just canceled this, right? Like, pretty sure this is not going ahead as we proposed. We get that. We can't make a change to it and then carry on. This hearing now becomes kind of done. If we change what we're proposing, we have to have a new hearing. We could have canceled it, because we kind of thought, "Yeah, I know, we missed the mark here." But that would have then made it so that none of you would have showed up, and we wouldn't have gotten the opportunity to speak to you. I listened and wrote a whole bunch of things. But now I'm talking to you because I need you guys to listen, so that you can all also leave here and think about what this really means. What we're trying to do is implement some kind of change that will trigger some kind of growth. Because the options, as Hurt pointed out, are lower your operating costs or increase your revenue. And we don't want to increase revenue by simply increasing residential taxes. So, how do you raise revenue? By generating business, by bringing the industry, by diversifying the economy. CKPI has stabilized, that looks good. What we need to do is create an environment for business where risk-taking entrepreneurial people, and that's, that's not a lot of people, that's a small group, but they look at things like the environment that we might create with our taxation scheme, or special service levies, or whatever it is that we're offering, and they go, "Huh, that looks like an environment where I might make a profit if I invested in a business in this area." That's what we need. Otherwise, we're just, we're just treading water. And at some point, you run out of energy to tread water and you just drown. So, I mean, we've been treading water for a long time. We're trying to find a way to change some of this stuff. Special service levies might be an answer that can trigger some change on the business end of things, so that it creates an environment for growth or potential growth. Um, but we need feedback on that, we need ideas about that. The seven of us sit here with our staff and try and engage the CDC and other experts about it, but it's not enough. We need more talk from you guys, and I don't mean talk on Facebook where you commented on somebody else's comment who had commented on their thing that was on some page somewhere. Write us, email us, we all have email addresses. Stop us somewhere, phone me. I don't Facebook, I'm not a big Facebooker. I have a Facebook account, but if you message me, I might see you three months from now. Phone me, I'm in the book. I'd love to hear from you about what you think we can do to make things better. And phone me if you, you know, we do something like this and you're like, "Man, I'm not happy about that." I'm on 257 Trager Drive, uh, I stand to, to lose from the special service levy because I also own a property on Message Street, um, almost identical to Eric's situation. Um, and so, I, I get that it's, you know, it's not easy to change, it's don't look great for me personally, but I'm trying to see the larger picture, not just two years from now, twenty years from now. Twenty years from now, this needs to be better. If we change nothing for ten years, then, then this meeting will be looked back upon and be like, "Oh, if they had done that, it'd be better off now." Maybe, maybe not. But everybody needs to get more engaged. Everybody needs to see more than just, um, you, you need to actually do some math, you need to actually think about what makes a community, what fosters growth in a community.
Well, it's too dangerous for any kind of business to come here, for one.
Sorry?
It's too dangerous for any kind of business to come here, for one. Twenty-six people on the street in the uptown area the other day.
Sure. And, and I, and I, you know, I know that that's not easy, right? I know that there are a lot of challenges that we have to face, it's not just one thing. And I mean, it's ironic that our policing costs are so large and we're trying to deal with them, and yet one of our largest problems is downtown presence that perhaps doesn't foster a, a good business climate. So, we've got some work to do there still.
Right, but the proactive choice, the proactive things that we've discussed is, people as residents, like installing lighting to stop break-ins, has not happened.
Yeah, and I get it. I mean, and it's because our only source of revenue is residential taxation. So, to, you know what I mean? Like, it's a catch-22, right? And it's all because in the absence of business growth, it just falls to the residential taxpayer to foot the bill for that. Uh, it's that or we cut costs, and by cut costs, that means the pool goes away. Like, Armand brought up luxuries and necessities. I mean, if, if it comes down to it, we can't generate more revenue and we have to cut costs, then the first thing to go are the luxuries. And the luxuries are the things that people want, because they're luxuries, because they're fun, right? They, they provide opportunities for, to not think about your taxes, because you can go and play basketball or work out or do whatever, go see your kids at the rink. But, I mean, so there is no easy answer there. It requires, and this is why I say the answer lies in triggering business and industrial growth. You look at any community that is thriving, they're either thriving because an adjacent community is thriving and they're serving some kind of bedroom community service, you look at a place like Warden or Winkler, they become, they become kind of like, uh, the poster child for, "Look at this community, it's low taxes, it's got all this new stuff." But, they have an industry of their own and they service as a bedroom community to other areas that are growing. We'd have that benefit, so we can't look to them and say, "Well, that's what we need or we should do that." Those aren't real possibilities. It's going to require us finding some, some avenues that are outside of the box and creative thinking, but it's not enough to just end the conversation there.
I have a question for you. Everybody's talked about generating revenue. You said earlier, as short as buying gold, oil, bringing sun to the beauty. I'm going to make myself a pariah here, I got to say this. How much money is the town making off JCA's? How much money is Suckers Community using for these kinds of things? People could talk about some of the benefits of complement, when people in, how does that really translate?
Yeah, and I mean, I don't know that I could respond to that. I don't know that I could respond to that, really, Brad? And it's kind of off-topic.
Yeah, we need to.
It's kind of off-topic, guys. I mean, we're, we're, let's try and stay focused on the issue of taxation, you know? So...
Well, he should. Are you okay?
I'm good.
Alan Gibb, how are you tonight?
Good, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Speak louder.
Thanks for the opportunity, Jim. Uh, just in closing, and to echo some of the things Andrew said, we're, we're really in a tough spot, right? And I know there's been stuff going back on, on Facebook and, and everyone's noticeably upset and understandably upset, but what we got to realize is we have a, we have an issue here that we need to address. Everything's going up cost-wise, whether it's hydro, whether it's our old aging infrastructure, whether it's the carbon tax coming in and our propane bill going through the roof. So, as a community, we're not shrinking, which is great, but we're not really growing either. So, all these added costs just keep getting added on and on to whether it's a homeowner or an apartment owner or a business owner. So, the crux of the matter is, how do we start getting some growth? And, what I think this is going to do, or whether it's this form or another form, is it starts promoting growth. And again, whether that's new homes being built, new apartments being built, our new small businesses coming into town, we need to get something going, because if we don't, we're in the same cycle, where nothing gets fixed, everything, again, and it's not the part, uh, the fault of how the town operates, but we have old infrastructure, we're an old community, so things are going to start costing more to maintain. And again, these costs keep going up, so, there's no easy way I, to deal with it, but I, I appreciate everyone who came out. I, I think as council, we didn't do a great job going it out, um, as I said before. So, this was a great opportunity here from everyone. But again, tackle what Andrew said, is that I think we need to get together a bit as a community and look at some of these things and how we're going to deal with them.
Thank you, Ron. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, it's great to know that, uh, everybody still cares a lot about it.
What did Alan say? We never heard a word.
It's really hard to, it's really...
He said ditto to what Andrew said, yes.
Watch it on the after that.
Yeah, yeah.
Did he say yes, did he say no, what did he say?
Oh, he, he's, he's in agreement, we need to get back to the drawing board on this.
They can call me directly if they want.
Said you can call him directly if you wish. Basically, we're in a tough spot, issues need to be addressed, everything's going up. Um, we aren't growing, added costs keep getting higher, added on. Um, how do we get growth? We need to do a better job at rolling this out and need to get together as a community. Is that what it is?
I, you know, we can go back and forth here for a few more hours if you want.
When's the next council?
Um, the second and fourth Monday of every month. Yeah.
At six.
Not sure what the number on the calendar is for that.
The ninth, April ninth.
And budget will be coming up shortly, public hearing, so...
Love to have you there.
We're talking about leasing, we need to talk about leasing, and hopefully, we're still talking about leasing. Um, Community Watch fell short quite a number of years ago. Is that not something we can put back onto the RCMP to take responsibility for that and organize some Community Watch groups growing? Because we had Community Watch in our neighborhood, and it was a really good thing, and then it just kind of disappeared. If that's a duty that they should be performing, we're paying them good money, they should be performing it, is there some things we can put back on them? And the other thing is, I do not think, I've heard bits and pieces about this, but I do not think that it's ever been clearly, um, said here as to how the federal government and the RCMP are holding us hostage on this whole thing, because it's very expensive. You said we lose, if we sent away four officers, well, then the rent goes up. Well, how is it that you lose four officers and the rent goes up? It's interesting, and I don't think people in this room...
It's a formula of utilization of square feet, it's crazy, it's crazy, because that's what happens. The fewer members you have, the higher your rent. And, and it's their formula, and, uh, you know, you're, you're, like, that's what I said, it's an uncontrollable cost.
So, I get that. So, Ellie is the problem, and he is the just problem for this community, okay?